We're on record. We're on record. Good evening and welcome to the meeting of the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills Board of Adjustment. Today is Wednesday, July 23rd, 2025, and it's 7:30 PM. Announcement is made that adequate notice of this meeting has been given and that it is being conducted in accordance with NJSA 10:4-6, Act of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act. Roll call, Ms. DeCros.
Yes, here.
Mr. Joskowitz.
Here.
Mr. Musarella.
Here.
Is Mr. Petty here? Nope. Mr. Quinn.
Here.
Mr. Ready.
Present.
Mr. Willand.
Here.
Chairwoman Graniani.
Present.
We have our board planner, Mr. Chadwick.
Present.
Our board engineer, Mr. Lemanowicz.
Here.
And our board attorney, Mr. Johnson.
Here.
The public, please join us in our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the greatness of its essence.
Mr. Chadwick, can you raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm that any testimony that you give tonight should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Mr. Stolmanowicz, do you swear or affirm from any testimony that you give tonight should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
Sure. We've received correspondence from Attorney Mike Rubin requesting application 2245 to be carried from this evening to November 5th, 2025, without further notice, and grants an extension of time for the board to make decision on the case through November 30th, 2025. If I can please have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Um, DeCros. Resolutions, please. Okay. Everyone, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's okay. So, um, the first resolution, uh, 2519, Berkowitz, he's not here, DeCros, Joskowitz, Petty, Quinn, Ready, and Graniani, uh, can vote. Um, can I have a, a motion for application 2519? Just my pen.
Second.
DeCros.
Yes.
Joskowitz.
Yes.
Petty.
Yes.
Quinn.
Yes.
Ready.
Yes.
Graniani.
Yes.
The next two we can do together, uh, application 2479 and 2416. We have Berkowitz, DeCros, Joskowitz, Quinn, Ready, and Graniani. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
DeCros.
Yes.
Joskowitz.
Yes.
Quinn.
Yes.
Ready.
Yes.
Graniani.
Yes. Is there anyone in the general, in our audience that would like to come up and say anything other than what is on our agenda for this evening? I see none. Application 2512, Taylor Dickerson, 16 Helsinger Road, Block 90, Lot 8, Zone R3, a C variance to construct a covered porch, second story addition and an open deck with stairs contrary to Section 430-35, Column 4.
Can you raise your right hand, please? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
State your name, spell your last name, starting with Q, please.
Sure. Uh, my name is Taylor Dickerson, D.I.C.K.E.R.S.O.N.
And I'm Brian Loew, B.R.Y.A.N., L.O.W.E.
And why don't you tell the board what it is that you're here for?
Absolutely. So, we are, um, both teachers and our family is expanding. We just welcomed our first child in Kipul, and so we are looking to, uh, make a little more room as we expand our family a little bit more. Um, and as such, we are adding a second floor on the existing footprint to our house. Uh, where our, uh, variance was in contradiction was just when it came to the covered porch in front of our house. Um, and so we are seeking to, um, have, have that variance accepted and approved. Yep.
Why is it that you need the variance?
So, we need, uh, more room in our house, that's that second floor, the variance for the front porch. We are already in, um, I'm not sure of the parlance, but I'm just gonna say contradiction to it. Um, our house, we're in the, uh, new side of Mount Tabor, and as I'm sure any of you know who are in Tabor, those houses are kind of, uh, already, you know, close together. And so it was built sort of close to the street. The allowable distance from the street is supposed to be 40 feet. We're asking, uh, and we're currently at 30 and two tenths of a foot already. Um, so we're asking for it to be, uh, seven feet closer to the street. When you ask why we need it, um, it is something that is, um, nice for the family to be able to come out on that porch, you know, in the evening, be able to have a nice community, um, you know, vibe, I guess, for lack of a better phrase, um, with our neighbors. And our neighbor across the street has a front covered porch, so that would also be something nice to be able to, you know, have that community with them as well.
Did you see the, uh, engineer's report?
Yeah.
Yes. And did you discuss it with them?
Absolutely. So, we went to the engineer's office, and I don't believe I met with the chief engineer. I'm sorry, I'm not sure of the gentleman's name, but we met and we discussed it. He said that after the C variance, after this meeting, uh, we would do a, um, I believe it was a, a small survey, and he said he would come to the house and we would conduct that and he would, um, give us, uh, thanks, recommendations on what the next step would be, and then obviously we would follow his recommendations. As for these that are on here, um, you know, the, what was spoken about was the movement of dirt. Uh, the movement of dirt is quite minimal since we are going to be building on the existing footprint. The only movement of dirt that we would see is the, uh, when we are building the deck in the back or the side, those footers for the deck, and then also, um, a tiny bit of movement of deck for the front porch. However, uh, we're on a pretty level plane.
I don't think that's the big issue.
Okay.
For you, the big issue might be the cost. And do you understand when he wrote that the court, the, the improvements that are needed could be costly?
Right.
And if we tended to agree that you need this and grant the variance?
Mm-hmm.
I think the stipulation would also be that you're gonna agree to what the engineer agrees upon.
100%. So, we met with, um, we met with our architect as well for that, and she had assured us that, uh, she was, uh, capable of, of being able to fulfill those. And, you know, for the, we spoke about the dry wells, and then we also spoke about any sort of, uh, stormwater mediation or mitigation.
Sometimes when someone comes in front of our board, we suggest that they get a more definitive plan.
True.
So they know what they're saying yes to.
Absolutely.
But if you're comfortable.
It's like you already do that.
Yeah. So, okay.
Yep.
Great.
Thanks.
Any questions from our board members?
Do you think you're gonna hit rock there?
So, I'll tell you, I'm a pretty avid gardener, and from the digging that I've dug in the backyard, or I haven't really hit too much rock there, you know, so far. I'm not.
Not hard, not hard rock.
Say it again.
You didn't hit any ledges?
No, no, I, I've been able to dig, you know, trees and.
Okay.
Are there any questions?
So, question, who owns, uh, the plan shows a 40-foot reserved area. Who owns that?
So, that is, if you're talking about on, uh, Rupi Piquery, the one that backs up to Rupi Piquery, I believe that's Township.
Okay. Uh, 'cause the survey shows that, is, is that, that's your fence?
Yeah, that, that, um, that was built, um, prior to.
Because the, the fence goes, and I'm gonna guess about 20, 25 feet into the adjoining property. So, if the board is, uh, and this board is not an enforcement arm, but, um, if the board is looking to approve this, I would recommend that there be a, uh, a statement in, in the resolution stating that the board action does not justify or legalize that fence.
We've done that, the board's done that before.
What's that?
The board has taken that kind of approach before.
About the fence, I will say that it was, it looks like it is to, um, the same degree as our neighboring fences as well. And so it seems like the person who constructed the fence used that as a, as a guideline and not necessarily the survey of the line.
Right. That's all I have, Adam Schirrmann, thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Is there anyone in the audience that is in favor for this application? Anyone against this application? I see none. Would one of our members like to frame a resolution, please?
I think you did what you needed to do. You, um, explained why you needed it, which is expanding family, which is great. You went to the engineering department, you got their, uh, kind of approval, you agreed to do what they were going to want you to do, so I'll be voting for it. Application 2512, Taylor Dickerson, 16 Helsinger Road, Block 90, Lot 8, Zone R-3, recommend granting a C variance to construct a covered porch, second story addition and open deck with stairs contrary to Section 430-35, Column 4, with agreeing to the.
Conditions mentioned.
Conditions mentioned.
In charge of engineer's memo.
And the engineer's memo, and with Mr. Lemanowicz's, uh, note about the fence.
Second. DeCros.
Yes.
Joskowitz.
Yes.
Musarella.
Yes.
Petty.
Yes.
Quinn.
Yes.
Ready.
Yes.
Will, Willin.
Yes.
Graniani.
Yes. Your application is approved.
Thank you so much.
And you may be hearing from the office, and at that time you can apply for your zone.
Excellent. And may I just say before we go, too, that Nora has been a huge help along the way.
Yes.
And I don't know what she gets paid, but it's not. We got to go back and forth.
Thank you.
We agree. Nora.
With my pleasure.
Thank you.
Yes, lots of luck. Application 2528, Meta, 569 Allentown Road, Block 253, Lot 13.01, Zone R4, a C variance to legalize an air conditioning unit on a pad contrary to Section 430-35, Column 8. Mr. Meta?
Can you raise your right hand, please? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Um, what is, what is it that you'd like to do?
Uh, so I have, uh, the, the new air conditioning unit is, uh, installed, and for that, the, the base pad that is being installed is three by three, which is, uh, is close to, like, it's, it's supposed to be allowed, allowed, uh, is six feet from the neighborhood, but the, the new one is installed a little bit bigger than it, that's why it's becoming four feet and six feet, six meters, uh, distance from the neighboring, uh, so I want to apply for the variance for that.
So, are you replacing an existing air conditioning unit?
Yes.
With one that is slightly larger?
Yes.
And this is the same location?
Yes, exactly same location.
The concrete pad is already there.
Yes.
Very diminished request, my proposal, labored.
Okay. Any other questions from the board?
No.
Any questions in the audience in favor of this application or denying this application? I see none. Any ones would you like to frame?
Yeah, application 25:28, Mohit Meta, 569 Allentown Road, Block 253, Lot Number 13.01, Zone R-4, to grant C variance to legalize an air conditioning unit on pad contrary to Section 430-35, Column 8.
Second. DeCros.
Yes.
Joskowitz.
Yes.
Musarella.
Yes.
Petty.
Yes.
Quinn.
Yes.
Ready.
Yes.
Willand.
Yes.
Graniani.
Yes. Your application is approved. You will be receiving a letter, and at that time you can go into the office and apply for your permits.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Thank you.
Application 24:48, Dave and Tess Lewis, 30 Battle Ridge Road, Block 15.7, Lot 11, Zone R-1M, a C variance to legalize a basketball court, shed steps, deck and stairs and patio contrary to Section 430-35, Columns 8, 9, 10, 13. Section 430-10C and 430-10I. Your application has been carried from the May 21st to 25th. Application.
Can you raise your right hand, please? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? State your name, spell your last name, please.
My legal name is Teresa Lewis, L.E.W.I.S.
Um, it's my understanding that you would like the board to consider putting this matter off, is that correct?
That's right.
Okay, can you please explain to the board why you want this matter off?
It has become quite contentious, um, and I feel like I have gone to different departments and I'm getting different responses, and I have hired an attorney to help me navigate this process because I didn't anticipate all these things, so.
Can you speak into the microphone, please?
Yes, of course.
Who have you hired as an attorney?
I hired, um, can I look it up? Um.
You're in with me.
He's on vacation. Um, we have, uh, called a few people, like I, I said, this was last week after I came three times to different departments, applying, amending. We are decided, we're taking the basketball court out.
All right, just right now, do you, do you know the name of the attorney and have you actually hired that?
Absolutely have hired him.
So you've signed a retainer agreement and hired.
Absolutely, Dennis, is Dennis, I'm sorry, I'm a little nervous, I have a lot in my mind, um, as I told Nora, we have a family, uh, medical emergency, um, his name is Dennis, oh my God, I'm looking at his email right now. Um, I can't remember his last name.
Dennis Triskel?
Yes, thank you, Triskel.
Have you hired an engineer?
I have not yet, no.
Do you intend to hire an engineer?
If that's what my attorney suggests, we will do so.
Because you may recall that the last time you were here, the board strongly suggested that you hire an engineer.
No, what the board strictly suggested was that I hire a landscape architect.
That was previously.
No, no, that was, I, 'cause I didn't come the other time, 'cause I was away. The, um, board suggested I hired a landscape architect to design the berm. Now, that was pre us deciding, as, uh, somebody here had suggested to take the basketball court out. We ha, we have secured somebody, gave us a price, we have agreed to do that.
Are you gonna amend your application to show you?
I did amend.
That's already in?
I, I did amend to, to take out the basketball court. Correct.
Okay. Um, you, this started with an enforcement action against you and your husband, correct?
Yes, my neighbor's report, I have an illegal basketball court for 32 years in our property, correct.
Okay. Um, so there's an enforcement action pending.
Yes.
Right now, correct?
Correct.
And do you understand that even with the removal of the basketball court, you're still over the allowable coverage?
Correct, and I, my attorney is advising us on what, uh, impervious coverage, uh, issues we will take care of in order to not have those anymore.
Okay, so, please, to, explain to the board why you couldn't get all of those things done in advance of tonight's meeting?
Because I didn't anticipate all of these different requests that I've been getting from different, every time I go to this engineer, they say, do this, and I do it, and then I go to this one, and they said, do this, and I did it. And so it wasn't until last week, but I said, look, I ha, I have a cancer situation happening, and I, I'm a little overwhelmed, and I said, I can't handle it. And that's when I decided, and I spoke with Ms. Jolie, and I said, look, I can't do this any longer, I'm just gonna get an attorney to come and do this for me.
So, you're, you're asking the board to carry this application, is that correct?
I have. I, uh, you asked me to get rid of the basketball court, I did. You asked me to get a berm, I agreed to it, but you want a, a landscape architect. I had talked to my landscaper, which I agree, I, um, started a little paver wall to prevent any water runoff, because as I said, in, according to my neighbors, the water doesn't come to my house, it just comes down and does a 90-degree angle to their property. And I will say that at the one occasion when the hose broke, we had a hose issue and water was gushing to their property, and I take complete responsibility for that. Um, and I haven't made any attempts to remediate, and had they come to me directly, I would have gone above and beyond, um, but.
Are you going, are you going to be able to have someone come next time to offer?
Absolutely.
Let's, let me finish my question.
Absolutely.
To offer an opinion?
Absolutely.
That what you're going to do is going to relieve the flooding issue on your neighbor's property?
Absolutely. 100%.
You mentioned that you had spoken to your lawyer, and your lawyer recommended that you further reduce the impervious coverage.
Correct.
So you're gonna further amend your plan as well?
Correct.
All right.
You said you were going to engineer to engineer. What engineers were you going to?
No, no, I'm, I hired my, I hired my attorney, and I'm going to listen to, he's gonna, uh, check the impervious coverage, part of our issue, and I, I, I don't think I should be speaking because he probably told me to say on, advice of my counsel, I shouldn't be speaking about some of these things, but my house, um, is wider than the rest of.
That's not what I'm asking. Before you gave testimony that said you went to one engineer that told you one thing, another engineer told you, what engineers were you going to, is my question?
Here, I went to Paul Nankoff.
Okay.
I went to, um, um, this, oh my God, where, Ms. Jolie, you can help me, where you, uh, the zoning department, where I had to show my survey with, with the.
They're, they're not engineers in that department.
Yeah, that department, and it's pavers, and they, I started to do that little mini retaining wall with pavers, they told me to stop, I stopped immediately, they called me, I happen to be out of town, but I called my landscaper and I said, stop, I was try, I thought I was trying to help the situation, um, and I stopped. I, I have followed every guideline you guys have suggested, but here I am.
Okay. What is the remediation?
Well, it's up to the board as to whether to grant the application to carry the matter to another date. Well, she's gonna be bringing further testimony and further changes, why not?
Yeah.
She's got the right to do that.
What does that do with the enforcement that just sits on hold?
The enforcement action in this town is, is basically stayed until you hear this application.
Okay.
So it doesn't resolve the issue that's.
Do we know if the neighbor's getting water or still?
Um, I believe that, but my assumption would be that since nothing's changed on the property.
If they're here, could we ask them?
Uh, they are here, you, if you want, like that.
We will ask them a few more.
I think I'd like to know that.
Do you want me to move yourself so they can go?
Sure. I, I think they're here represented by council.
Good evening, everyone, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Great. I'm Kate Coffey from Day Pitney, and I am here on behalf of the neighbors, which is the Pinto family. I was last here in March when the board was previously considering the application. Um, and as you indicated, Mr. Johnson, at that time, the applicant had been directed to have a landscape architect prepare, um, professional plans for whatever's going to be removed and whatever is going to be done to cure the flooding problem that's occurring as a result of the impervious coverage, in particular, as well as the encroachments that are on the property. Um, the application that was submitted is just a, a survey with an X over the basketball court. Um, so we still don't have any professional analysis of what the, um, removal of the basketball, basketball court would do, and we actually have new legal improvements in the form of this wall that's under construction on the property as well, which is more impervious. We do have your engineer's analysis, which indicates that even with the basketball court gone, the impervious coverage is still significantly over, um, Parsippany's limits, about 14% over the limit, with the basketball court being eliminated. So, at this point, the, the history is there was a, a zoning, uh, analysis done by your, uh, enforcement folks last July that identified all of these, um, violations of your zoning code. There was a hearing in December, there was a hearing in March where the applicant was directed to have professional plans, uh, prepared to submit to you so that we could ensure that the flooding problem was being addressed. It is still ongoing, to answer your question, um, and, and continues to affect my clients.
So, could I ask you?
Yes, sir.
If the, if the court was there for 30-odd years, is that what I, that was the testimony, I believe, what has changed, or has it not, that it has been brought forward in the last year? What happened to the previous 30?
I can certainly ask my clients. I imagine, for one thing, as we all know, the storm intensity has only gotten worse over the last 30 years, um, and every storm, stormwater in general has become more and more of a problem, but I can certainly ask my clients if they perceive other differences on the property.
Right, and then I would also ask, if we were to say, no, we're not gonna delay it, what happens then?
She needs to move forward with her application tonight, Ms. Lewis.
Okay.
Which the application doesn't tell us too much.
Right.
It doesn't, and, and, it sounds like the application in its current form, you would have concerns as to whether it solves the actual problem.
Right. Uh, we do, I mean, one, we, we don't have anything that's been prepared by a professional, but what we do have, which is, is helpful, is your own engineer's analysis, which is that, given the remaining significant overage of the impervious coverage limits, that there would, I, there, there would likely not be resolution to the flooding problem, which is what your engineer concluded. We don't have anything to have our own professionals look at, other than the survey with an X on it, um, so we're not really in a position to do much analysis.
So what would be the remedy? Well, to the flooding?
Well, I thought she just said that she's gonna submit a new plan to address the impervious coverage, which is what you want.
And I, I think that we, we would like an engineered plan to address the impervious coverage, and also, to the extent that the impervious coverage can't be completely cured, some kind of stormwater management measures.
Right, that, that's to solve, ultimately, your clients want the flooding to stop.
Correct, that is, that is the goal, is to not have, uh, our, our property being flooded, exactly right.
And you would probably concur with me that making Ms. Lewis go forward with the application in its current form tonight does not solve your client's problem.
I, I do agree with that, but I also, I mean, it's been eight months since this began before this board, um, and when we were here in March, we were adjourned to May, and then at the applicant's request, we were adjourned to this evening, um, so, we do need this to, um, get, get it, right, it's, it's been a year since it, it started with the zoning violation, and, and unfortunately, um, all of these postponements only come at the cost of, of my client who keeps being flooded, so, so while we would like an engineered plan that will resolve the issue, you know, I don't know that we can wait months and months and months for that to occur, so I, I, I really do think we need a, a very short time period to try to bring this to, to a close, especially given that the applicant has had since March already when they were supposed to be producing plans.
Understood. Fortunately, this board is extremely busy, as.
I, I know, you have a very full agenda.
Could we, for lack of a better term, demand that she hire, that she hire a engineer, or that we get an engineer report, or that's on her, she brings us what she wants, and if we don't, we're not happy? But again.
That's, I would encourage Ms. Lewis to have her attorney contact me, as well as Ms. Coffey.
Right, but it's.
I wasn't allowed, uh, I had asked Ms. Jolie for your name, and I wasn't provided because the attorney wasn't contacted prior to tonight's session.
Right, now, it's, I spoke with the board attorney on it, and for, uh, that's why didn't, um, hear anything, but for that much, our conversation yesterday was very different, you felt that none of this was your responsibility, and you refused to do the berm. That was, yes, that was our conversation yesterday.
Right now, we're dealing with whether we, the board wants to carry the matter or Right now, we're dealing with whether we, the board wants to carry the matter or not.
I understand.
I'm not sure we have a choice, but it's how do we resolve their problem?
Well.
Right? If they, if she comes and we say, we don't like the plan.
Then the application would be denied and.
And then what?
Then the enforcement action would take off.
Right. Can we do a special half hour meeting maybe before a regular meeting? Um, I don't know how much time that they need to have someone. Otherwise, uh, on a regular meeting, it wouldn't be till, you know, early October.
And we're coming into theoretically.
End of July.
Storm season. I think, I mean, I'd be available for an early meeting.
I, I agree. I'd agree with that. We gotta get it taken care of.
But how much time do you need?
Can you come up to the microphone? Come up to the microphone.
I'm just gonna grab my calendar.
Sure.
My attorney will, um, be back Monday from vacation and he, um.
You're gonna get a date tonight?
Absolutely.
So what, how much time do you want?
Give us two weeks.
You got an engineer that's gonna sit down and figure out what this problem is.
Two weeks.
Two weeks.
Two weeks.
It's never gonna happen. Two weeks is not gonna be sufficient.
What, what have you got for dates there?
No, no, not contacting your attorney.
No, she knows.
Come up with the plan.
No, I, I understand. Now, can I, can I rebut a little of what?
Right now, we're just dealing with the issue of whether.
Right.
The board is gonna grant your request to carry the matter.
I, I can't answer that.
If we do not do a special half hour meeting beforehand, it would be October 8th.
Is it reasonable for two weeks?
It could be basically any time that, before any of our regular meetings.
What about us before one of the September meetings?
Uh, it could be September 8th or 24th.
Why don't we do the 8th?
The 8th?
September the 8th available to confirm, Ms. Coffey. Can I just make one statement?
Right now, we're just dealing with the issue of whether you're.
And this would be at 7:00 PM.
So the proposal, we have a special meeting, 7:00 PM, September 8th. You have a half an hour. You'll have your new engineer's report, your attorney's file, and ready to go, right?
I will make sure that that happens.
Okay.
You gotta get those plans in 10 days ahead of that.
Sorry, Sep, it's September 10th, not the 8th.
Oh, 10th.
Yeah, the 8th is October, September 10th.
Does that work for you?
The 10th is good.
Okay.
The 8th, you had me nervous. Yeah, sorry about that.
So you need, someone needs to make a motion.
Yes, make a, on the members' place.
Yes.
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
Second.
Second.
De Crosse?
Yes.
Josh Bulwitz?
Yes.
Mazzarella?
Yes.
Teddy?
Yes.
Quinn?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Willand?
Yes.
Brignani?
Yes. And we will see you September the 10th, and at that time, you will have new plans submitted to the office 10 days before September the 10th.
7:00 PM. And no later than 10 days.
Would you say no, have Mr. Driscoll?
No later than 10 days before. It's early.
Give him your contact.
Pardon me?
I'll give him your contact.
That's fine. I'm also happy to reach out directly, so when he's back from vacation.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Application 2511, Charles Turner, 86 Hiawatha Boulevard, block 518, lot 17, zone R4. Receive variance to construct a new two-story, single-family dwelling with covered porch and a patio, contrary to section 430-10F and section 430-35, columns 4 and 10.
Raise your right hand, please. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
State your name, spell your last name, please.
Sure. My name's Charles Turner, last name T U R N E R.
Can you have your architect with you today?
I do, yes.
Raise your hand, please. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
State your name, spell your last name.
My name is Abhijet, A B H I J E T, last name is Parikh.
And your license is still in good standing?
Yeah.
And you were qualified as an expert architect at the last hearing, correct? So my recollection of the last hearing is that you started to get into the testimony and then a discussion came up about the township engineer's report, correct?
Correct.
But you didn't quite go through the plans or anything of that nature?
No.
So, um, what is it that your client would like to do?
All right. So we're here tonight for three variances. Uh, the first one is a front yard house setback on River Drive. Uh, second is front yard porch setback on River Drive, and the third is for building coverage. Uh, the existing house is a single-story house and it's experienced severe flooding over the years. It's in a flood zone. Um, and the existing house is also non-conforming in the front and rear yard setbacks, and it's non-conforming in the impervious coverage. It's at 40.1%. Um, moving on to the proposed plans, we're proposing to demolish the, uh, existing house completely. Uh, the plan is to build a two, uh, new two-story, uh, structure. Uh, we're gonna be raising the foundation uh, to comply with the NJDP flood hazard requirements. Um, and the new house is gonna be pushed back six feet, uh, further on River Drive, and we're going to be, um, complying with the rear yard setback as well, removing the existing non-conformity. Uh, we're reducing the existing impervious, uh, non-conformity as well. We're gonna be bringing it under 40%. Um, that said, we're still asking for three variances for the front yard, uh, for the front yard house setback, where the new proposed structure is gonna be at 16.2 feet, uh, compared to the current 10 feet. The, the proposed porch is gonna be at 10.2 feet, uh, matching the existing house, and the building coverage is going to be at 22.2%, uh, 2.2% over the allowable. Uh, we explored pushing the house further back, um, to, uh, reduce the front yard setback requirement, uh, but that would pretty, that would mean that we would pretty much be eliminating the existing, um, backyard for the homeowners, and they wish to have a small space for gatherings and just their use. Um, the house has also been efficiently designed, uh, for the family's needs. There's no wasted space. Uh, all rooms are sized appropriately for function and comfort. Uh, the slight increase in building coverage comes from the covered porch, which is about 20 square feet, uh, but that provides protection from the weather and, um, architectural element that enhances the exterior aesthetic of the house. Um, for the design standpoint, uh, the, we've designed it for, redesigned the house, uh, for its fit within the neighborhood. Um, we've kept a simple roof line, uh, a gable structure that reflects, uh, other homes in the neighborhood. And, um, yes, we just asked the board to consider our request and, uh, grant the homeowners their, um, request for building a new house.
Did you change the architectural plans since the last time you were here?
Yes, we increased the building coverage by 20 square feet. Uh, that was due to, uh, we found that, that since this is in a flood zone, we had to increase the, um, finished floor height. So, uh, five new steps were added going from the, uh, garage to the house. So that portion that we added the steps, we increased the building footprint just in that area so that the steps don't go too much into the house.
You, you're showing a brick foundation. How does that comply? Do you have reeves holes in it?
Oh, just the, uh, brick, uh, thin brick veneer. Um, there, then it's not gonna have, um, it's just a half inch thick, uh, brick veneer.
Your, your, your rendering doesn't seem to show any, any agenda underneath that. It's like just artistic. I mean, you got the water has to flow through this foundation wall, correct?
Correct. I mean, that's, so.
It just wasn't showing this.
Yeah, the, the renderings aren't showing gutters, um, but we will have.
I wanna make sure it wasn't solid space and you were gonna try to keep the water out of it.
No, no.
All right.
I was, a lot of gonna flow through there.
Right? It would be like.
Yeah, it's gonna have a flood vent. It's gonna have, yeah, it's gonna have about 60% of flood vents.
They will be there.
They, they will be there.
I wanna ask you, in terms of preserving rear yard usable space in that patio.
Mm-hmm.
Is there a pool plan?
There is a set of plans.
I got it. And you're taking the breezeway, we'll call it, mudroom, out of the kitchen, correct?
Correct.
And if you. Oh, that is not, it is a garage, yes?
Right now, they're gonna use it as storage space, uh, but if they do wanna convert it into garage, they, it is gonna be a slab-on grate. Um, but right now, they're gonna just use it as their extra storage space. That's not gonna be habitable space.
It would seem if you moved that fall forward in line with the front of the, front wall of the house, you could move the house back and you wind up with a bigger yard, rear yard area off that space. Follow me?
You're talking about the, the storage space being put in front?
I'm talking about.
Page you on.
I'm looking at your survey plan. And. That storage room, potentially a garage space. The house was moved back to the, that'll move the garage space forward, but you still wind up.
Right, right. I mean.
Yeah, I get you.
Yeah.
Strike that.
Good drive.
No, I just.
So the driveway goes around the garage?
Yeah, uh, there, there's a little bit of, um, space, uh, towards the side of the garage as well for.
Is that for another car to park over there?
Yes, if, if they need, uh, to park, they, they have.
Well, you, you do have, you now have an engineering.
Yeah.
Report that you didn't have, the engineering drawing that you didn't have the last.
Yeah. So, yeah, I mean, based on its drawings, we are proposing three C pitch pits, uh, drivels for stormwater remediation as well.
And you saw the municipal engineer's report of July 9th, I take it, right?
Yes.
So you would, your client would comply with all the recommendations contained in that report?
Do we have any questions on the board? Any questions? Is there anyone in the audience that is?
No, I was just gonna, that reminded me of something. The last time you were here, you had a neighbor that came and wanted to make comments. Have you had a chance to talk to that neighbor since the last time you were here?
I certainly have, yes. I actually spoke with him directly after that meeting on May 7th. Um, I could, we, we had a nice discussion about what he was looking to do, and it was entirely related to the flooding situation about just making sure that a lot of the inlets that we currently have don't go away or that they improve. And I mentioned how we were going to comply with the board's, which is to get a civil engineer on board for this project. And, um, he's actually currently on vacation, but I told him that, uh, pending the board's approval, if it was approved or denied, I would go over to his house afterwards and I would discuss it with him, um, afterwards, which he appreciated. But I did reassure him that we would follow whatever recommendations the civil engineer, um, provided for flooding, yes. And to not flood our neighbors, of course, yes.
Where, where is he, his house in relationship to your?
Yes, so he's northwest of me, uh, one block up, one block over. So diagonal, oh, actually two diagonals away from me.
So he doesn't adjoin your property?
No. No, he's not adjoining.
Other questions? I'll return back to final resolution, please.
Uh, application 25.
Hold on to the public.
Oh, sorry about that. Is there anyone in the public that is, uh, have any questions of this applicant? I see none. Anyone in the audience that is in favor of this application or against this application? I see none. Would someone like to bring a resolution?
Yes, before I do that, I just wanna say that it looks like a good application. Uh, like on the board, there you go, talked to your neighbor, straightened things out with them, uh, talked to the engineer, agreed to do what, uh, they requested. So I'll be voting in favor of this and it's application 25 colon 11, Charles Turner, 86 Hiawatha Boulevard, block 518, lot 17, zone R4, recommend granting a C variance to construct a new two-story, single-family dwelling with covered porch and patio contrary to section 430-10F and sections 430-35, columns 4 and 10, uh, with agreeing to what was requested by the engineer.
In the July 9th, 2025.
As Mr. Johnson is saying.
Second.
Laura, please.
De Crosse?
Yes.
Josh Bulwitz?
Yes.
Mazzarella?
Yes.
Teddy?
Yes.
Quinn?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Willand?
Yep.
Brignani?
Yes. Application's approved. We'll receive the letter, and at that time, you can apply to the ordinance.
Good luck.
Good luck.
Thank you very much, board.
Thank you.
He said 10 minutes. Joe said 10 minutes. Joe said 10 minutes.
Five.
Joe said 10 minutes.
His application.
Application 2518, Chick-fil-A, 1180 Route 46, block 715, lot 11.1, zone B2. Receive variance to construct a freestanding sign. Mr. O'Neill?
Yes, good evening, Ms. Chairman, members of the board. Joseph O'Neill, here on behalf of Chick-fil-A. So this application is for relocating a sign. When I filed the application, it was of a different design. They were gonna raise the sign to 25 feet, but in their June 11th plan revision, they reduced that height back down to 15 feet and moved the sign to that 15 foot off the property line. So it's actually complying now with the local ordinances.
So you don't need a variance?
I don't need a variance for that, and we did propose some additional wayfinding signs on the site. You may have seen them in our packet, but they don't contain any identifiers for them being for Chick-fil-A. If you just notice the packet, you'll see they just contain, you know, height for your drive-through, or drive-through this way. So we're saying that's not a directional sign, which would be limited in number by ordinance 430 287B. So we don't think that's variance either. So basically, I'm here to thank you for that and wish you all a good night, but I hope if you do, if you could do a resolution regarding this.
What do you want?
Please make note of those two facts, that the sign is now complying and that wayfinding signs on the June 11th plan are not directional signs, so we can get our zone permit real quick.
Okay. So I understand the ask with respect to the, the Bane sign, but what exactly are you asking the board to do with respect to the directional signs?
To recognize that they are not directional signs, only wayfinding signs in accordance with the ordinance I suggested. 430 287.
Wayfinding tells you where it is.
I can't hear him. What did he say?
Wayfinding.
Mr. Crosse could not hear you.
Wayfinding tells you what it, where it is. Directional tells you where to go.
Uh, yeah, and you, you need signs out there, I, I have to say, because you go up 46 and, and, yeah, I go by it and I realize Chick-fil-A is there. You know, I could buy it before I see it.
Yeah, they, that's why they need to pull the sign forward.
Yeah.
And then they're gonna lose all those little temporary signs.
Yeah.
Up by the exit, so people don't go driving past.
Right, right. I, I, it is, it is hard to recognize that it sits there on the right.
And I have to, of course, that, this is Vincent Kelly, our site engineer. Perhaps we can have him stand real quick.
Sure. Raise your right hand. Do you swear from the testimony that you're about to give should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
State your name, spell your last name.
Vincent Kelly, K E L L Y, business address 101 Crawford's Corner, Holmbel, New Jersey. I'm a licensed civil engineer in the state of New Jersey, current and, um, good standing. I was also testified in front of the board for the original Chick-fil-A application.
Great.
Now, Mr. Kelly, you heard my testimony?
Yes.
Was it correct?
Your summation.
My summation.
It is correct.
You don't have anything to add, do you?
I do not.
Thank you. That's all I have for Mr. Kelly, and I'll submit it to you.
Do you have?
No. On?
No, the only, the only issue I had was the, was there was a discrepancy with the sign heights and whatever. That, that's been explained. So now they're in full compliance?
Yeah.
So, so these are wayfinding signs that do not require a variance?
Yes, I hope the board would agree with me in that regard.
Yes.
So, is there any?
Wait, hold on, you have a question?
No, no. But, but.
Good?
Come on, ask that question, 'cause I, I, mine is about, are we giving them a C variance?
They don't need a C variance. They don't need one.
We don't, so how, how do we approve?
You are, you are adopting a resolution that, given the amended application.
Okay.
That they are wayfinding signs, a variance is not required.
Okay.
I second.
Is there anyone in the audience?
No.
Mr. Johnson, wouldn't we need an amended site plan approval for this?
Excuse me?
Isn't this an amended site plan approval?
Is it? Do you need a site plan?
Yeah.
Because the original site plan had the sign where it is now, so this is an amended site plan approval. All right. I didn't apply for that, but I'll accept that, since I'm here. Added bonus.
You did?
I did amend it.
Okay.
You did amend it.
You did? Okay, great.
That's that June 11th.
And it states amended on my site plans. Right, okay. So we are, so the board then is considering the application to amend the site plan.
There you go.
Okay.
To approve the amendment of the site plan.
To approve the amendment of the site plan, more correctly stated, yes.
So what, someone has to make a motion?
Someone has to make the motion.
I make a motion.
Second. No, you won't.
That's okay.
Colerole, Alain, Teva?
No, no.
No, no, you have to vote.
DeCros?
Yes.
Joskowitz?
Yes.
Mazzarella?
Yes.
Teddy?
Yes.
Quinn?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Willand?
Yes.
Brignani?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. Have a nice weekend.
How was that?
Good job. You're hired. 11 minutes.
All that.
Application 22, colon, 45, 199 New Road. Nora, do we need a new?
You already did that.
We did that.
You did that as part of the course.
Okay, very good. Motion to adjourn, please?
Move.
Second?
Justice.